I think we just changed the date on it.
Okay.
And the date's wrong, so.
Okay, I'll turn.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Corey Boganrey, Principal Traffic Engineer here at the City of Des Moines, along with my colleague Jeff Wiggins, Transportation Planner. We're going to give an update on the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan and the Complete Streets Annual Reports. Should be a fairly quick presentation. We'll give a little background on both Complete Streets and Vision Zero. We'll talk about how the reports have been prepared and what it will look like going forward. Jeff will give an update of Complete Streets. I'll give an update of the Vision Zero Annual Report, and then we'll wrap it up with questions.
So, the Complete Streets current iteration in Des Moines grew out of Plan DSM, which was a result of Move DSM, pardon, Move DSM, which in turn came out of Plan DSM, which came out of Iowa Smart Planning in the early 2010s. As it says on the screen, Complete Streets aim to create a comprehensive transportation network that is safe, equitable, multimodal, complete, and connected. So, we view every city, state, and federally funded transportation project, as well as private development projects impacting the public right-of-way or where the public is allowed to travel, as an opportunity to create safer, more accessible streets for all users.
And the Vision Zero Transportation Action Plan is based on the Safe Systems approach. And the Safe Systems approach is a holistic and comprehensive approach that provides a framework to make places safer for people. It works by building and reinforcing multiple layers of protection to both prevent crashes from happening in the first place and then minimizing the harm caused of those crashes when they do occur. So, that's the basis for the action plan. The action plan was adopted in 2023. And from, within that action plan, there's five focus areas. You can see on the screen there: city policies, programs, processes, and partnerships, safe streets for everyone, safe speeds, culture of safety and safe street behavior, and then improved data and transparency. And then drilling down further in the action plan, there's actually 19 actions and then 70 steps.
Complete Streets in Des Moines actually started a decade earlier. In 2008, there was a policy that was adopted that was ineffective and unenforced, underwent a significant overhaul a decade later, and was adopted again in 2018 concurrently with the Transportation Master Plan, Move DSM. Transportation Safety Committee was made the custodian of the policy, and it outlines the policy itself quite explicitly, the elements that should be included in the annual report, including elements relating to access, safety, health, equity, and other trends. The annual report chronicles significant engineering projects that have occurred within the last calendar year that include a transportation component.
And as I mentioned, the Vision Zero Action Plan was adopted by Council in June of 2023. And so, to align with the Complete Streets report, there's a lot of data that's in both reports and that overlaps between the two. And so, the first report that was completed last summer only included about six months' worth of progress. There's some additional things in there, but that first year was only six months. That report, the requirements are outlined in the action plan as well, and they'll contain those four things on the screen there. So, we'll track progress towards fatal, serious injury, and overall crash reduction. We summarize the effects of safety interventions, like before and after studies, detail any adjustments to the program, moving action steps, and then an update to the data dashboard, which is all the crash data.
So, the Complete Streets report has now been completed for five consecutive years. We have a little bit of information to look back on in terms of trends, the most recent of which, the 2023 report was presented to the Transportation Safety Committee back in September. Data can take quite a while to compile and to get in that format, if you will. I go through each of the CIP projects to review for Complete Streets elements and adherence to the policy. I have to coordinate with outside agencies and collect data from Iowa DOT, DART, and Des Moines Public Schools, as well as internally within our city departments, from the GIS and Development Services, sidewalk information, as well as response time from the Fire Department. In all, last year's report took about 150 hours to prepare, mostly in the months of February through April.
And the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan was presented to the Transportation Safety Committee in October of 2024. As I mentioned, a lot of the data overlaps with the Complete Streets report, so thank you to Jeff for putting together a lot of the data that does go into the Transportation Safety Action Plan report as well. And moving forward, the reports will be on a calendar year basis so that these two annual reports align with each other.
So, what you have before you on the screen is the annual Complete Streets data dashboard. This one is from 2023. I believe this, as well as the accompanying narrative, was distributed to each of you. And if you have any questions about them, you're very welcome to ask them to me, and I'll try my best to answer any questions. As you see in the gold bars, those are the same categories that I highlighted on the previous slide of access, safety, emergency response, health, public input, and equity. And that's the organizations that's dictated by the policy itself.
Jeff, did you say we have a copy of this Complete Streets report somewhere?
I believe so.
I think that was handed out before the first time they were going to have the presentation.
Oh, okay. And here it is, too. Okay, I see it. Never mind. I see it in here. Thank you.
Got it. So, I'll take the opportunity to just walk through a couple of the high-level trends that I've noticed now that we have five years in place. And there's a couple slides of that. The first has to do with the crash data. And unfortunately, what we see in Des Moines is not inconsistent with what we've seen both across the state and the nation, which is that vulnerable roadway users, that is, people who don't have that metal shell around them when they're traveling the public right-of-way, people walking, people biking, people on a motorcycle, they're significantly more susceptible being hurt in a crash. And so, they're disproportionately represented in the KSI numbers. In other words, those who are killed or seriously injured in a crash. If you look to the right there, whereas, you know, some 99% of our crashes involve vehicles only. If you look at the charts on the right, you'll see that those who appear in the serious injury and fatal crashes are on par with those in vehicles. And I'm reminded of this today as we are in spring-like temperatures and the reprise of walking to school in the dark for elementary students. So, Complete Streets is a counterweight that attempts to keep this alarming trend in check. A couple specific items: sidewalks and bike facilities. Sidewalks, we've made very significant progress thanks to the investment that you, the Council, have put towards this initiative. 21 miles of new sidewalk installed as a result of the capital improvement program, another 25 and 1/2 miles replaced. Private sector has kicked in about 22 miles as well during that same time period. Move DSM identifies 180 miles of Priority One sidewalk gaps. Of those in the last five years, we've now filled in 15. Bike facility, similarly, over the last five years, 11 miles of on-street facilities added, another 18 miles of off-street facilities. Move DSM also identifies the core future bike network, which includes 156 miles of bicycle facilities. Today, we have 84 miles in place, including about 17 miles that were filled in the last five years. Just in the last four years, we've increased about 17% the overall inventory of bike facilities in the community.
Jeff, if you could go back to the previous screen on the sidewalks.
This one?
That one.
Yeah.
So, great, we're making progress on the sidewalks. Are we short of the goals that we set out? Or were there goals and...
I think there were stated and unstated goals. I think the vision was to hit those 180 miles in 20 years, so backup envelope, that's like nine miles a year. I will say that the costs associated with sidewalk infill have been significantly higher than initially anticipated because it's not just greenfield development. There's all the costs associated with things like retaining walls, grading, driveway aprons, and the like. So, progress has been slower than hoped for initially, but we're making significant progress. And I will say that whereas that's only five miles in the last five years, oh, pardon me, 15 miles in the last five years, this most recent calendar year, 2024, is going to see a pretty big spike in that number as well. So, that's what we look forward to.
Yeah, I know some of the Ward Four sidewalks that Joe had, like, there was a lot of retaining walls around some, I can't remember what school that was.
How Elementary.
But it was really pricey, but appreciated, but yeah. Do you have some number in here about what the cost per mile looks like now, or...
I believe Steve had figured that out.
If you don't have it in there, I mean, it'd be interesting just to learn what the cost per mile on sidewalks is.
I don't have it on top. I didn't convert it to miles, but in terms of per linear foot, they have ranged anywhere from $75 to $350 per linear foot. We've been more sitting around the 200 per lineal foot when it comes to that. So, 75, obviously, you're getting more into the, as Jeff mentioned, the easier greenfield, where we already have the right-of-way in space. The 350, we're looking at buying right-of-way, retaining walls, and drainage and all sorts of things. So, yeah.
sidewalks are wide?
The standard is five feet, so.
Are trails included in this number?
Not, these do not include our Parks and Recreation Trails. Like, it would not include, like, the Carlisle Connection Trail and the Parks and Recreation Trails.
Or side paths. Those are 10 feet wide, aren't they, generally?
It depends on what, I think this would include, like, Guthrie and East Douglas.
Not East Douglas, but Guthrie.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yep. So, Guthrie would be included, because that one solved a number of issues with school route, you know, as well. So, yeah. But it is wider.
Okay.
When they're wider, do we maintain it, or does the, do we maintain them when they're 15 feet?
Yep. When they're 10 feet wide, yes, we maintain them, yep. Because, yep, our ordinance only requires a proper order to remove, actually, I think it's four feet of snow, so.
Jeff, why you're on this page?
I'm sorry, you jumped ahead. Under bike facilities, can you explain what 84 of 156 exist?
Yep. So, Move DSM identifies the future core bike network and the secondary network. So, 156 miles is what it identifies as the future core network of what we need to get a bike facility within a reasonable distance of each residence. And as of today, we've now completed 84 of those 156 miles.
Or, well, so, this is your 2023 report, so not as of today, but as of...
As of December 31st, 2023, yes. All right. Second slide on those trends that we've seen over the last five years in the Complete Streets report. Curb ramps, we've made significant progress as well, about 9,000 ramps over those five years. In 2020, we completed the backlog of curb ramps that were identified in the city's consent decree with the United States Department of Justice that we had worked on fairly intensively over the prior decade. The Complete Streets policy itself had a significant backlog of CIP projects that were planned and programmed prior to implementation and adoption of the new Complete Streets policy. That has now been swept away, thankfully. And over the five years, we had hundreds of projects in the CIP with a transportation element. Five exceptions were requested and granted, and there were about a dozen projects that fell a little bit short of the ideals of the Complete Streets policy, amongst those many being implemented by outside agencies such as WRA and DOT. Transit access, in terms of sidewalks, has continued to increase over that same time as a result of what we discussed in the previous slide. Emergency response in the center of the screen, whereas both emergence and total calls increased over the last five years, we also saw an increase in the percentage of calls where the first responding vehicle arrived within four minutes, which is our national best practice. And finally, surprised to probably none of you, we've seen a significant increase in the traffic home requests over the last five years.
So, again, I'm going to give an update on the Vision Zero 2023 annual report. As I mentioned previously, the Vision Zero report, including tracking progress for fatal, serious injuries, and overall crash reduction. This is a figure that was in, actually, in the plan, and so we'll be updating this annually. You can see there that we've had a decrease from 2022 to 2023 in fatalities and serious injuries. And then the dashed line is for kind of the progress that we are tracking for 2024. Just drilling down a little bit, the figure on the left is the fatal injuries, and on the right is fatal injuries and serious injuries. So, as I said, from the high in 2021, we are down for fatal injuries. There's a slight increase in 2024, and that's, that data is not final. So, we get all that crash data from the DOT, and there's typically a lag of a couple months in that data, mainly because, you know, these fatal and serious injury crashes, they, it's considered crash-related if a death occurs within 30 days of the crash. And because they're very complex with investigations and official reporting, those numbers typically lag, as I said, two to three months. So, that's the data. The different colors represent, the red is pedestrians, yellow is bicycle, blue is motorcycle, and gray is vehicle. So, for 2024, tentatively, half of those crashes were motorcycle fatalities. So, motorcycles really are overrepresented in our data.
And so, did the State House pass the hands-free?
I don't, I think it...
No. Either this week or next week, it's on the floor, so.
Okay. I would think that would make a significant difference in these numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what we're battling.
Yep.
Both, yeah.
One other thing that we do track is our progress on implementation. So, as I mentioned, the action plan has five focus areas, 19 actions, and really what we're measuring here is the 70 action steps. And in the report, there's kind of a whole spreadsheet at the end of the action plan that has each one of these steps and a fiscal year tied to it. So, some of them are in the future. There's 45 of those in the future. In that first six months that we measured in 2023, we completed 12 of those actions. There are six that are on track. What that means is several of the actions are things you have to do on an annual basis. So, they're things that we do each year. Six of those were completed, seven were not completed. Six of those steps require additional staffing and additional funding, both in the CIP budget as well as the operating budget. And so, at the time of this report, you know, a lot of that, those items were not funded. I know, moving forward in the recommended budget, there is money, I think, starting in fiscal year '27 for Vision Zero initiatives that will help, you know, fulfill that, that action step. The next thing I want to get into is, you know, how are we doing when we actually have a safety improvement? Several of these, I'm going to go through a couple projects that they weren't part of, you know, they were done before the Transportation Safety Action Plan, but they were specifically safety projects. And so, what we're going to be doing moving forward is really looking at that before and after data. And so, I'll walk through a couple projects here. The first one is turn lane restrictions, pedestrian crossing at Keelway and Crocker. This was one of the locations that was considered one of the most difficult to cross. Keelway is three lanes in each direction with turn lanes here. And so, there was an overrepresentation of left-turn crashes, of people coming from Crocker Street onto Keelway. Or previously, you were allowed to go through or take a left off of Crocker. In the five years before this project was done, we were seeing seven crashes per year and five injuries at this location. And so, as part of a resurfacing project, we added a pedestrian crossing, as well as restricted those movements. So, you can still turn left from Keel onto Crocker Street, but on Crocker, you cannot turn left or go through onto Keel. And when this was implemented in 2021, since then, we've only seen two crashes per year, and there's been zero injuries. So, it, you know, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities. Another project that actually had transportation safety fronts from the state was East 30th and University Intersection Improvements. This is right next to the state fairgrounds. Previously, this intersection was ranked as the 12th overall for safety improvements. That's kind of the DOT's previous iteration of what they now call potential for crash reduction. That just basically means there's lots of crashes happening at this location. And this project was completed in 2002. It included what we call positive offset. So, when, previously, the picture there on the left, you can see, you can kind of see the medians there. And when a left-turning vehicle is turning, a lot of times, if there's somebody opposite you, that vehicle blocks your view of traffic. And so, what we did with this project, and something that we're starting to implement on other projects, is actually removing that median at the intersection, which allows those left-turning vehicles to move over to the left, and it gives you better sightlines to see those vehicles coming through when you're taking a left. We also improved pedestrian crossings, and the, there was kind of a free-flowing right-turn movement that we eliminated. And in the years since that's been completed, crashes have actually been reduced by 63% at this location. One other thing that we will mention is the speed limit reductions. So, we currently don't have a funding program to do kind of a full citywide study, a management of speeds. But what we do do is each time we have a construction project, we evaluate those speed limits. Kind of the old way of thinking in traffic engineering was to set speeds based on what most people are traveling, the 85th percentile speed. So, what is 85% of people driving, we're going to set that as the speed limit. That's not how we're setting speed limits now. The practice now is to be more context-sensitive, so actually looking at the characteristics of the road, the land use, is there parking, the other bike lanes. And so, we have these three tools, the Credible Urban Speed Zone Model, US Limits 2, and NCHRP 1776. So, just basically, what those are, are three different guides for setting speed limits based on the conditions of the street. And so, we look at all three of those, and whichever one spits out the lowest speed limit, that's what we set our speed limits at. And you can see the, in the map there, the black lines are High Injury Network, which are kind of our most dangerous streets according to our Transportation Safety Action Plan. What was done previous, so from 2000, or 2020 to 2022, is shown in blue, and that's when we started using this context-sensitive speed tools. And then what's shown in red, which includes Fluor Drive, Broadway, among others, were done in 2023. Looking forward, as I mentioned, the annual report was only 2023. Last year, we're actually successful in securing $13 million from the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant, and that was awarded in September of 2024. That included several projects, just going to highlight them, upgrading our school zone beacon. So, in that picture, kind of right in the middle, you can see our schools flashers, which flash during the, during school time hours. We've actually started implementing them with speed feedback signs, which have been shown to lower speeds. So, we're going to be upgrading all of those on the High Injury Network next to schools. We're also adding retro reflective backplates to traffic signals. So, there's a few locations up at MLK and 19th Street and the interstate, or 235. And that's actually just putting yellow tape around the traffic signal. It makes it stand out, and it's been shown to reduce crashes up to 15%. We're just going to blanket all our signalized intersections on the High Injury Network with those types of, that reflective tape around each one of those traffic signals. There's also three corridor projects. We have Forest Avenue from Beaver to 9th Street. That includes a road diet and bike lanes, among other multimodal improvements. MLK Junior Parkway and 19th Street, reducing lanes on both of those streets and building shared use path on 19th Street. And then the Southeast 14th Street corridor improvements, which is a project basically at Southeast 14th and Mari. And so, all those projects were part of that $13 million Safe Streets and Roads for All funding grant. So, that's kind of the summary of our annual reports and looking forward. So, appreciate the time to come and present, and we'll take any questions that you have.
Is the, is the administration, the current administration, going to continue with some of these grants for this Vision Zero?
I believe so. I don't know if we have all the, those answers. We haven't had the notice of funding opportunity at this point, but...
Yeah, we don't have answers at this time. Unfortunately, the federal highway administration is still on hold. They haven't signed our agreement. So, fortunately, we were able to get the agreement signed for our RACE grant for Southeast Connector right before this administration came in, and so that one's good to go. But unfortunately, our Safe Streets for All grant, it's ready, it's just waiting for a signature, so.
So, this money hasn't even, we don't have this money being allocated. I'm just talking about any future dollars, but this, this hasn't been allocated yet?
It's, we've been awarded it, but they have not signed the agreement to say go.
But we don't have it in our hands.
Correct, yeah. I would hope, I'm hopeful that our government would continue forward with these safety efforts, but I think there's just a lot of uncertainty, unfortunately, so.
You might want to get back to us when they, when the uncertainties.
Yeah.
Which day did you want them to get back?
Depending on which day they get the money. I'd like to know when you get this money, for sure.
I, yeah, these are, to say these are important projects would be an understatement, and you know, I'd be in the heart of one of them right now. Yeah, yeah.
So, how often does the Vision Zero team meet, or whatever, your committee, or...
Do you want to answer this? Go ahead.
My leg's asleep. Sorry. The Transportation Safety Committee is, kind of, has the oversight responsibility for the Vision Zero. We meet with them on a monthly basis. We'll discuss some elements of Vision Zero, but we focus on Vision Zero at least twice a year with that group. In terms of a staff perspective, we meet roughly every two to three weeks and discuss various projects that, and many of our CIP projects have a safety component to them, or transportation component as well.
So, one thing I'm especially interested in, having taken a look at what other communities are doing, is they've reduced the speed limit in school zones to either 15 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour. So, is that something that's being discussed here in Des Moines?
Yes, we've been discussing it with our partners in, with the Des Moines Police Department, as well as our legal department, to see what our boundaries are and what we can and can't do in terms of, I think you had suggested, enhance enforcement. do in terms of, I think you had suggested, enhance enforcement, other fining suggestions, such as if it was a certain amount of speed that was observed over the posted speed limit, that'd be maybe double the fines or whatever that might be. Plus, the infrastructure that would be required to implement, signs as well as any flashers. Our typical practice is to put a flashing device in a school speed zone so that people know that it's active. And that is the highest, we get the highest rate of compliance in those. So we're looking at all those, and we anticipating having that report or those findings wrapped up and to you all probably within the next two weeks.
That'd be great news. So, I mean, the cost of a life versus the cost of a sign, you know, I would, let's spend the money on the signs if it would save a life in a school zone. So if the speed limit was posted at 15 miles an hour, then we give a 10 mile an hour grace, right? Before you, before they actually write tickets, so you could go.
Not necessarily.
Well, not necessarily, but in practice.
That's just with the rate, with the automatic ATVs.
Okay, yeah, with the mobile enforcement. So that means like, if it's posted at 15, you could actually go 25 without getting a mobile ticket.
There's no mobile, probably in school zones, are there?
There's a few.
There's a few. From our discussions with, just to be clear, from our discussions with police department, as well as legal department, statute, state statute says that when an automated traffic enforcement device, a camera, if you will, is in play, you cannot write a ticket less than 10 miles an hour. However, if it's a physical officer with a radar gun observing speeds, they can write the ticket, make the stop within one mile an hour, or whatever the tolerance is for error for that device, for that radar device. So a lot of times you hear the 10 mile an hour is, you're trying to look at the egregious speeders, and in some cases, it's also a safety issue from the officer pulling over someone. So that's more of the high-speed interstate, U.S. highway type of environment. But when we're talking a school zone, we also have to consider, that changes. It's a more closed environment, and it may be have other opportunities to enhance enforcement. But also, we need, we're trying to keep in mind that in the area where we have school zones today, many times on some of our local streets, it's already congested. To be able to travel more than 20 miles an hour, sometimes more than 15 miles an hour, is in itself a unique occurrence. So, but the bigger grand.
John?
Yes.
I have a follow-up on that in particular. I was going to ask about it, but since you talked about the congestion, one of the things I was going to ask about related to school zones and Vision Zero is the four-lane undivided roads and whether or not we needed to eliminate all of those in school zones. Because I think we've been doing some of that, but there's at least one really prominent example that I can think of, and probably, probably others, where we have four-lane undivided, undivided roads, which, which according to our Vision Zero study, is the most dangerous road design. So are there plans to eliminate all of the four-lane undivided roads by school zones?
We do not have any particular plans in that vein. You are correct, Councilmember, that that has been identified, it was identified in Move DSM, as being overrepresented. Those roads that are four-lane undivided have the higher levels of serious injuries and fatalities compared to the number of road miles that actually exist of that type of road. So we are working to reduce those, but it takes time, it takes money and effort to do that, not only from a school zone standpoint, but really to reduce those from a four-lane to something that is maybe a three-lane cross-section. So we are cognizant of that, and we're working towards that. But many of those roads also are under the jurisdiction of Iowa Department of Transportation. So you have another layer of coordination that is part of that. But what I was trying to get to was that the concerns may be the block or two beyond the school zone, where we still have vulnerable users walking to and from school, but the school zone isn't there. And that's also what we're going to be looking at as well. And you can't necessarily have a school zone that is a mile or half mile beyond the school because you start losing the enforcement or the voluntary compliance aspect to that. But it is something that we intend to come back to with a briefing paper in the next couple of weeks, the pros and cons and the challenges. Unfortunately, budgetary challenges will be at the forefront to implement any program as we've all been listening to over the last several months.
John, one more question about the flashing signals in the school zones, because our high schools have open campuses. Are those flashing the entire school day or just what people think traditionally of kids are going to school or schools dismissed? Are they flashing always because of the open campuses?
I believe that the ones, and Corey can correct me if I'm misstating, is that the, we flash during the arrival and dismissal times. The challenge with the open campus is it's open around, and you don't know when people are. But the other aspect with regards to the high schools is that we're dealing with older children. Granted, one can make a comment about their ability to make good choices, but it's a little bit different than you are in an elementary school, where they may, they may not have as much self-awareness of their mortality as hopefully as those that are high schoolers. Plus, you're having individuals that are learning more about traffic safety because they're engaged in driver's education and starting to get into actually being a more active participant behind the wheel as they travel to and from places in the community.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
So overall, do you have an idea when you'd have the 2024 report for us?
Most likely, the 2024 report will not be available until August. As Jeff mentioned, it does take a lot of time to go through the data.
I just have one comment, and that's a huge thanks to John and Jeff. It seems like I'm always sending you emails with traffic issues from people, and I mean, you've seen them, you know how detailed they can be, and you always respond back, outline everything and make it so it's very understandable, and you state your case, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
You're quite welcome, and I'll give most of the credit to Jeff. He has a planning background, I have an engineering background, so he's more well-versed in verbal communication than I am.
And Jeff comes to neighborhood meetings, and he does a great job.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Boland?
I don't need to go into the details today, I'm sure you don't have it, but two of the Looking Forward projects are in wards I represent, the Forest Avenue one and MLK. I'd like to take a look at that, and I go to most of those neighborhood association meetings, and I haven't heard us talk about the, well, Forest probably touches four or five neighborhoods through there. So maybe we can talk a little bit about a communication plan, just because lack of communication scares people, so. I'd love to see what we're planning. In particular, on Forest, I want to make sure we're engaging with Drake.
Certainly, we'll get with you on scheduling, and we could have a meeting outside of this to discuss those.
Thank you. And we just need a really strong campaign of slow down people, because every, every neighborhood meeting we go to, it's about speed. As, and we probably could put speed bumps or humps every street, I think, in this city. So thank you for the report and sticking with us the numerous times you came.
Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council, my name is Steve Mayber, Des Moines City Engineer, Des Moines resident. Happy to respond back on the requested changes from border area maintenance. And so, again, I'm going to do a real quick background. As you know, in January, we did more of a detailed presentation on this, and so this is kind of the response to that. And so this all started, as member, back in August, and so we were directed to review Section 102.2 of the code, report back to council. We reported back in January with a more detailed presentation, and we've been directed to present revisions to the code here. Just a reminder, the border area is typically the area between, you know, as you're showing yellow there, between the street and the right-of-way. And so public right-of-way being that area that typically includes the street as well as the border area, so between property line to property line. Here's another graphic showing public right-of-way versus border area, okay? And so you can see whether it's, one side does have a sidewalk, the other doesn't, but the border area is still between, that area between the right-of-way line and the roadway. This is just a recap, again, the border area essentially boils down to, can, it's a space for the public, can the public safely utilize the public space, walking, accessing the on-street parking, utilities and whatnot, you know, for utilities to place utilities to serve the public, so. So we've been asked to and directed to accommodate the following items, landscaping ground cover, landscaping edging, carriage walks and associated steps, retaining walls, and these changes would apply to one and two households, two dwelling households, meaning that the focus here is the residential areas to allow these landscaping elements. And so, in other words, site plan requirements for non-residential properties, as outlined in Chapter 135, would still remain unchanged. So when there's commercial properties, streetscapes, downtown, you know, downtown-type areas, mixed-use developments, those would still go through Chapter 135. And I would like to point out the carriage walks, if those are allowed, those would need to abide by applicable state and federal regulations and requirements, so.
And Steve, could you define carriage walks again?
Yep. So actually, you know, I think I have that here in a future slide. Let me get to the next slide, that way I can show it there, but great question. Landscaping ground cover, so again, this is a change. The requested change is to allow landscaping ground cover such as rocks and mulch, rocks being less than two inches in diameter. So if you look at the graphic on the picture, the boulders, the snowman, the snowmen stacked boulders, those are not allowed, but the gravel round cover has been requested to be allowed. So anytime you work in the right-of-way, there's a right-of-way excavation permit, and that's just kind of a standard thing, that if you're working the public right-of-way, you have people, trucks, equipment, whatever, you need to have, you should have a permit. So this is the landscaping ground cover. Landscaping edging, the area to create a boundary material for an intended planting area, and the direction is to allow one row of brick or landscaping block at one level high, and there's a height, you know, so in other words, the picture on the upper right, there's just one level, that's allowed. The picture in the lower right, where they're stacking them, is not allowed. And as the councilman met, you know, requested, yep, the carriage walk is a paved portion of the city right-of-way or border, within the border area, for the purpose of connecting the curb line or connecting the road to their property line. So that's the point of the carriage walk. It's the purpose of connecting the curb line to their private property. And so in this case, it'd be concrete or brick, and we have a, we've been requested to say that the maximum would be five feet in width. We don't want people to pave the whole right-of-way. And then, and there's also a requirement of not being within 20 feet of an intersection or mid-block crossing for the purposes of, obviously, we don't want to confuse it with the actual designated crosswalk for crossing the street. And so that's, this is the request for allowing carriage walks. So it's also called service walks. Yep, and still, there was still, as any type of work in the right-of-way, would be a right-of-way excavation permit for work in the right-of-way, so.
So if work needed to be done, who's responsible to replace that?
Yep, I got a slide to point that out. Yep, no, you're good, you're good, yeah, thank you. Retaining walls, it's been requested to allow retaining walls, and those are, again, the point of retaining wall is to retain soil within the natural grade to prevent movement or erosion, okay? And so that's not building up a big mound to build retaining walls. This is a retaining wall that's needed for the purposes of actually retaining the natural grade that exists. And so, and again, in this case, not only would a right-of-way excavation permit be required, but a right-of-way license to allow the structure to exist would occur through the real estate division. And so there could be different reviews, a building permit may be required if the landscaping of the retaining wall is, exceeds a certain height. And I can't remember if that's three or four feet off the top of my head, but it's, when it gets above a certain height, then you need to have a building permit review, so.
How many of those do you have in the city that are sitting on the right-of-way?
I'm not really sure on the, and I, to be honest, I can't even remember where this picture, this picture came from.
How do you not cut that?
It looks like, that's what I was going to say, it looks like Tana One.
Yeah. Yeah, in the past, we've actually, you know, they're either by license or we've actually worked, we had one where we, our Public Works team worked and graded back the right-of-way and took it out, you know, so, yep.
But if you have a wall like that and it wasn't licensed, do you have to tear it out? I mean, if it's?
Nope. So with all this, with all this process, we've, we've been asked to do a grandfathering effort so that in this case, they would get a license. So if there was, if we receive a complaint about a particular retaining wall, we would go meet with the property owner, and they would, would get, actually get a license, so. So we would not, or remove it if it's, yeah, they don't want to get the license. But so, yeah, there is a grandfathering clause for carriage walks and retaining walls that would allow them to, like I said, retaining walls, get a license if they so choose, or work with us to meet the requirements of what a carriage walk is, as long as they don't pave the whole right-of-way, right? Clarification, a couple of things that would not change, right? Our vision clearance, that is number, can I see in an intersection? That all still remains the same with those height requirements. Vegetation did not really change. Remember, we worked back in a few years ago with Mary Farrell and others to allow a bunch more vegetation, so that would all stay the same. And so the appeal process, if someone was unhappy with the decision, they still could go request an administrative hearing. Like I said, in my tenure being here, there's been two requests, and so doesn't happen very often, but there is a process where someone can go see an administrative, to an administrative hearing with a judge and discuss whether it meets code or not. And like I said, the requirements for ground cover are for single and two household dwelling units. The non-residential would still apply under Chapter 135. And to the mayor's question, I want to be clear on this, any city work by city employees or contractor, or work by entities on permitted infrastructure or utility work in the right-of-way, such as like our fiber, we have a lot of fiber-to-home initiatives going on, we're getting fiber installed all over our city, to say the least, and they will only restore turf grass in the border areas, they will not restore lands, all the labored landscaping plantings, ground cover edging, carriage walks, retaining walls. So in other words, if you put something in the right-of-way other than turf grass and someone disturbs it or damages it, don't expect it to be restored to the, by the way you had it. So that's a proposal, at least.
Is that a change, or this is unchanged?
Yeah, this is not, this is not changed, but now we're allowing more things, and so.
Grandfathering things, too.
Yep, yep.
I see.
The only issue I have is I see with the, with the fiber companies coming in, they're really tearing stuff up, and are you saying that all they have to do is just put grass in, they don't have to, and is it seeded, or, I mean, I, you know, I've got complaints where they tore up the yard, and then now we're left with weeds and mud.
If there are ever instances where they, the restoration of grass doesn't work, please let us know, we'll, we'll get after them, I, you know, I, you know, actually had a different, the grass that they planted for me, when they tore up my yard, was, is better than the rest of my yard, but, but, I mean, certainly, we've had instances where, it depends on crews, it depends on the crews, and, but on the other hand, to expect if we want, if we want to offer our residents, you know, fiber-to-home internet options and stuff, it's hard to expect them to, we have different types of landscaping in every yard to have them go through and put all that, you know, but, yeah.
Let me ask a really quick question, so I assume this was city contractors out doing curb and gutters, or whatever, but you're saying any utility company would only have to, would not have to replace?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the proposal, I don't know how, I guess, how we would treat them different than our contractors, I mean, they're putting in facilities in for public use, you know, and they're licensed to do the work, to have their facilities in public right-of-way, so.
Do they, I mean, I hear instances where the fiber companies show up, and they haven't even put the notices on the doors, saying, "We're going to be working in your neighborhood or in your yard," do, are they required to put something on those notices, or could we make them put something on those notices, saying, "Please be aware, we're not going to replace landscaping," I mean, is that too much?
You know, they've typically done door hangers or yard darts, and there have been instances where crews have missed, there's no doubt about that, but, I mean, you know, we're talking about, I mean, 900 miles of streets that, with 30 crews in town, I mean, some are going to miss, I mean, we could, I could talk to our permit development center about, should, you know, should there be specific language on there for the door hangers or yard darts, I guess, if that's desirable, you know, again, this is new, we typically, it's, you know, and it's presented in January, you know, the cities I've worked for in the past 23 years across the Midwest did not allow these things, they didn't allow landscaping, and so this is new, so to allow a lot more stuff, I'm not saying it never happened, but, you know, so it's new.
People just need to be aware.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if they could even put on the hanger something about, "We'll replace with grass," but, or some notification, I don't know if it'll make a difference if people will read it, so.
Yeah, you could, I just, from experience, putting it back, you know, people have different levels of expectations, right, I mean, of how blocks are positioned, and, and obviously, then, then, you know, I mean, I'm not going to get into the whole liability things, but then how somebody else puts it back, well, then, you know, when someone trips over this stuff, then who's really at fault, you know, you know, again, anytime more things are allowed, it makes them more complicated, there's no question.
Well, I definitely think it's more than fair that, but I think they should know upfront, before we tear up their stuff, you need to, you need to let them know that the only thing coming back is grass, if you want it all back the way you want it, then you, I mean, that's on your dime, and we're not going to, we're not going to put it back the way it is, so, I mean, that, you definitely need to let them know that.
Yeah, okay.
Upfront.
Steve, for residents that have a complaint about the utility work and whether it was dirt and not grass seed, who on your staff should we send those complaints, I've been setting mine at Jennifer Dokovich, but maybe that's not the right person to send it to.
I said mine is Steve.
Yeah, I mean, you could either come to me or our permit development center, would be, you know, like Rob Silvers or Adam Prellip in the permit development center, I, unfortunately, I have the, isn't there a right-of-way?
Right-of-way, dm.gov or...
Yeah, is it R-O-W, or is it?
Send it out, yeah.
Okay, I could, I'll send you an email with the, a general contact, yeah, yep.
Well, in fact, why don't you send it to all the council members, so, you know, if we hear at a meeting...
So we don't send it to Steve anymore?
Steve, I...
It's actually, I mean, I, trust me, I know I get a lot of emails, but it's actually not as many, we're installing, we have four companies installing fiber-to-home over 900 miles, it's not as many as you actually would think, they've actually, I mean, you've got to keep in mind, they're looking for customers, right, so, so if they make people mad, they're, you know, if, you know, if they make you mad, you're probably not going to go require their service, you know, so they have some vested interest in this, too, so, again, I know they haven't been perfect, we've had some issues, there's no question, we've had, we've actually had contractors, we've asked them to leave, and they've not come, you know, left and not come back, but, Google, you know, those companies have been willing to comply to have them leave, so.
Okay.
Steve, I want to just... Subcontractors, actually, it's not MetroNet or...
Right.
Google, it's their subcontract.
It's their contract, yep.
It's subcontractors of subcontractors of subcontractors sometimes.
Yeah, there you go.
Steve, like, on this replacing only with grass, like, I've watched these fiber companies in particular, but even other, even other utilities, if they have a choice between quickly tearing up a, I forget what you called the sidewalk to the street.
Carriage.
Or a carriage sidewalk, or boring underneath it, they're going to just, they're going to, like, they're going to always choose the easiest route for them, if there's no, if there's no impact on, on replacing it, or they have no responsibility on it, and I, like, I still wouldn't, I'm not really that comfortable with it at all, but, like, I could grow more comfortable if this is the direction we're going, that we have some kind of standard that they, you know, that they have to choose reasonable means to protect the infrastructure that's there already.
Yeah.
They, I think they already do it.
Yeah, I mean, they're probably, to rip, to your point, ripping out concrete, they're probably not going to likely choose that location to put their, they call them the flower boxes, the accesses, they typically try and put those at the property line anyway, because they put them at the property lines, so that way, from the flower box, they can send service to each, each home, so it's a financial reason, they're not going to typically choose to put it in the middle of the house where the service walk is from people's front door, so, I mean, they're not likely going to choose that unless there's like nowhere else to put one, and I, I guess I can't think of an...
In the right-of-way, or, I thought it's on the other side in the, on the, on the property, on actually the, our property, the little small box that like...
Mine is actually, it's, so in my case, my house, the property line is a foot behind the sidewalk, and then, so it's actually sitting right next to the sidewalk, and then I think actually we have a five-foot utility easement that allows them, so even, they could even be five, within five feet of the sidewalk, this were...
So it's on the right-of-way part of the...
It'd be in the public right-of-way, yep, the boxes are, yeah, the boxes are typically placed not on private property, they're on the, within the public right-of-way, or an easement, or an easement.
But, like, you're using words that I'm not sure I understand, so maybe a lot of people don't that are watching, you're talking about five feet between the sidewalk in your house, not five feet between the sidewalk and the street.
So in this case, this property is in my area, it's not my house, I did not put that, but in this case, they're actually, the right-of-way line would be about a foot behind that sidewalk toward the grass, and then there also is a five-foot utility easement in that whole neighborhood along the front edge, which makes it even more complex, but, so that would allow them, so in this case, they could put the flower box within five feet of the sidewalk in that grass, if they wanted to, they generally put it right behind the sidewalk, but, like, at my house, at the property line between me and my next-door neighbor, they have like, there's like the cable box, there's electrical, there's, the fiber companies have their flower boxes, there's kind of a little cluster of them, and they're behind the sidewalk, but they are in the public utility easement, so they are not on my, they're not, they're allowed to be there.
And Steve, when you say behind the sidewalk, that's between the curb and the sidewalk?
Nope, I apologize, between the house and the sidewalk.
That's why I was trying to clarify.
Oh, that's not...
So the easement goes further than your, into...
It's an easement.
Yeah.
It's an easement.
But it's not between the curb and the sidewalk?
Correct.
Yours is on...
Mine is within a public utility easement.
But it's not between the curb and the sidewalk?
Correct.
I just have never seen them there, and when you said that, I was like...
Right, yep.
So that's not where yours is, between the curb and the sidewalk?
No.
Between the sidewalk and your house.
Mine is, mine is behind the house side of the sidewalk, within, within a public utility easement, yep.
Steve, like, like in, like in my house, like, I don't know where the utility easement is, is there likely a larger area that's a utility easement, and did the utilities ever buy that from me, or did the city grant that on all the residents' behalf, or how did that happen?
Typically, they are done with the subdivision development, so when I, like, when I bought my house, my, you hire a real estate attorney, and then they work with you, and you, they give you a plat...
Right.
...of your house that shows, so in my case, in my house, it shows the boundary of my property, and then also, it would show easements that existed with the subdivision development, so it's been there since they, before the house was even...
Yes, okay, that's...
Not always, but there are instances where we, as part of city projects, will get, say, a utility easement for public utilities along people's properties.
But that's something the property owners granted, or...
Oh, yeah.
Were compensated for.
Absolutely, yep, yeah.
So, nobody has a utility easement that they didn't have the ability to know about?
That's, should be the case, now, people sometimes, maybe, I guess, I guess if I'm having a brain freeze, is, are you, I don't know that you're required to have an attorney to do a closing, but...
Read your title of the pitch.
I certainly would, but certainly, people probably can do things that, you know, but to your point, they should, you know, they should be able to get that information, so, and again, it's all over the place, I mean, there could be side yard easements, I have a side yard utility easement, and other cities I've worked for, they actually put utility easements down the backyards, and so you have rear yard easements, so then the utilities come through, and we even have some of those in our city as well, where the utilities come through right along the back property lines and do these sort of things.
I have that, actually.
Yeah, that's right, we were doing that, yep, yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a, one more question, so, allowing landscaping rock, or river walk, I think, river rock, in the right-of-way on a public property, I'm sorry, private property, single-family home, I think it's confusing that some of our development agreements don't allow rock in like a parking lot for a commercial building, that they require mulch, and it's inconsistent, I guess, and people scratch their heads, well, you know, how can they have rock over there, but I can't have it over here?
Yeah.
I know that's not your, that's another department, but it's just confusing to people, so, when is mulch okay, and when, yeah, pardon?
That probably needs to be changed, because I've had that same, that is very confusing, if we're going to allow river rock in the right-of-way, then we probably need to allow it in parking lot islands, where they're not allowed now because of probably the stormwater, I think is what you guys are saying.
And rock goes off, and then it's...
Under landscaping, on that urban edge, so.
Yeah.
Well, and there's processes for appeals through the...
The site plan, yeah.
I mean, they shouldn't have to, I mean, that should be, if we're going to allow it here and grandfathered in, we should allow it in other places, that's being consistent.
Okay.
Steve, why do you limit this to single-family and duplex?
The thought was that the focus, the main reason is, we already have a process through Chapter 135, through a site plan process, anytime you get more than, I think it's three, three units, it goes through a site plan process.
So does this apply to property that is zoned, or a property in reality, for example, there are houses that are cut up into five and six apartments, do they have to comply?
I'm sorry, their houses...
Houses that are cut up into five and six apartments.
Oh, that's a good question.
There are lots of those examples.
There are.
It would be a shame if a property owner said, "I don't have to comply because I have six units," and they're really in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, we'll have to look in that, we talked around and around about how to, you know, again, the thought was, since Chapter 35 existed, there's already a site plan process, but in terms of those scenarios, and there are plenty of them, we'll have to figure out how...
The solution might be going back to the zoning, so there might be a property that's zoned, single-family, and a six-unit home has been grandfathered, but it's still zoned, single-family.
Maybe that's a, that's a good point, a great suggestion, maybe it's single or two-dwelling unit or zoned, single-family, that would kind of help us cover that, that's it, I mean, that's something we'll work through with our legal team, it'll take us, you know, we got to do our three, so we anticipate this would be probably like a May, but May, when this would all be, you know, when we get through, when we get through putting all this code language together, so, it's going to take, it takes us time to work through all this.
So that's something you can look into, then, to tie it together?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, nothing's easy.
No, it is not, no.
Yes, we, any other, if there's no other questions, we have ended this work session, and we will reconvene at 4:00 for a closed session, and the regular meeting, then at 5:00, so, thank you for who came today, and for the presentations.
Thank you.